Okay, folks. Sorry to interrupt. I apologize for the delay. We had some tech trouble.
I think I'm going to.
We're going to...
I'm not really feeling that way.
Smaller group tonight, so feel free to move down. Just a reminder that we are being recorded. We just started the recording, so this can be watched well into the future, if you so desire. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Matt, do you want to come up and give us your name? And then just make sure the... Is that light to green, or is it red?
Hello?
Is it red or green? If it's red, just hit the button.
It's green.
There we go.
Oh, cool. That's so cool. I have a microphone. All right, so Matt Conway, Matthew T. Conway, LLC. I own 374 Main Street, a bunch of businesses, or three businesses in there, including Grounds. So what I'd like to do, that's the current layout of how Grounds work. So if we look at the... You can see handwriting on the right-hand side, it says porch. That's the front porch you walk in on from Main Street. You then take a right to enter Grounds. And there's that left-hand corner right at the entrance. We're going to talk about in a second. My next slide, I think, is going to show, yes. So what we're proposing in that corner, and I know some of you are frequent Grounds people, so you know the layout, when you walk in Grounds, on the left-hand side, there's a couple of couches and some bookcase-type things, that corner right there. It's like seven and a half feet wide, seven and a half feet long. We want to make that a bathroom, a half, a toilet and sink. So that the primary purpose right now to go to the bathroom at Grounds, you have to go through what is the kitchen area into a hallway, make another turn, and another turn, and then you're in the bathroom. Now, you're going to be able to walk into Grounds, and the bathroom's immediately on your left. We met with Mike Mathie as per Adam's suggestion, and he had a great comment, which we hadn't thought of. I'm glad Mike came. So we were interested in putting in, so when you'd come in, there'd be a wall with an opening, and then a second wall with a door. So Teddy wanted, like, privacy. You weren't... You were kind of blocked from visibly being looked at, that you were going in and out of the bathroom. Okay, so... But the problem is, what Mike Mathie pointed out is, we need to make sure the opening of that door is equal, like, in a straight line, to the actual door that you're going to open and close to use the bathroom for ADA purposes. So people in a wheelchair don't have to do all these jogs and turns. So if nothing else, we were really glad that Mike Mathie came and pointed that out. He also mentioned to us that we needed to make sure we did other ADA-compliant-type things, like a grab bar in the toilet area, which, again, hadn't necessarily thought of, so happy he came. We have the building, or the... What do you call it, Adam? A building permit, or whatever, from... Well, yeah, from the Fire Marshal's office.
Fire Marshal's office.
Yeah. So that is... So we also want to do some electrical, minor electrical work. We want to add a couple of outlets. If you're looking up there at the map, down towards the bottom, that's where the kitchen is, that bottom area. So that area, we want to add one larger outlet for Teddy to have a bigger oven than the one she... She has a, basically, a little tiny Pillsbury kid's oven back there. So she wants to have a real, a bigger oven. So that's going to require a different electric plug, and so we have to go in front of the... Go to the Fire Marshal's office for the building permit to do that plug. So that's where we... That is what we are requesting, that we build a half-bath in there, and we put in an outlet in the back kitchen. And that's it. Yes?
So the one thing I would just say...
Yep.
Is that, just, I do ADA from a roadway and sidewalk perspective, so I am no expert on buildings, but corners, just keep in mind, I know that, obviously, if they can't get through the door...
Right.
Or they can get through the door, you would think, in theory, your hallway's wide enough, but they have to navigate corners, which takes additional width.
Correct.
I would just make sure that you're not just...
Yes.
Matching your doorway with.
As a matter of fact, the way that this is drawn, now that I'm looking at it, is incorrect, because what Mike pointed out is, we shouldn't have the cust... The wheelchair person come in and then immediately have to take a left. He suggested that they come in, and we have that doorway a few feet down, like, sort of in the middle of that wall, so that it wasn't a sharp corner, to your point.
Yeah.
I, again, I had never even thought of it that way, but... So I get it. You're right. And Mike pointed that. So that picture is actually incorrect. The door is going to be more in the middle, not in... And then that doorway, which is an open doorway, and the bathroom door will be in a straight line.
And the door has a swing over, you should know that, so...
Yep. That's good. Adam, did you want to...
Sure. The only thing I was going to share, I shared this with the other department heads. They had no concern. Chief Lyon knew that you'd been in contact with Mike Mathie.
Yeah.
I think the only condition, when we get to the point of approving, would be that you supply the updated drawing with, it sounds like, the changes that you've...
Like to show where the door really should be.
Correct.
Not right there. Okay, yeah, no problem.
Emily, yeah, Emily had a question first. Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a comment.
Sure.
I worked in that building when it was C.B. Covert.
Yep.
And there was a half-bath that was in existence, a little bit behind where you have highlighted.
Wow.
Is there any plumbing left in there?
Not that I'm aware. So I mean, that...
It's a half-bath upstairs.
Well, the ha... I don't... Well, I mean, as you know, we've owned it, the building, 23 years. I don't remember there... There wasn't a half-bath there when we owned it.
Okay, all right. Then maybe they took it out.
They must have. And I... I'm not aware of any plumbing that currently exists. Before we came to you, we wanted to make sure with C.A. Miller that we could even do it.
Sure.
Like, was the drain... And it is, you know. Sean came over and looked at it and said, absolutely, there's plumbing. The big thing with plumbing, as you know, is the waste pipe. You can put a feed pipe pretty much anywhere, but as long as the toilet and the sink can drain, and it can.
Okay.
But I don't know, Emily. That's a good question.
All right, well...
That jog there that the bathroom's up against is actually a stairwell going to the apartment on the second floor. So I don't know where the bathroom would have been, but...
Are you talking, are you talking way back? Remember, the candy store used to be? Right.
Are you talking?
No, I'm not. I'm talking about as you came in the, in that front, the side door.
Yeah.
If you walked down just a little bit beyond where that is highlighted.
Yeah.
There was a half-bath there.
Huh. Yeah. I've heard so many stories over the years I've lived here of people that lived in this apartment, or, you know, yes, I've... It was the post office, right?
Yes, it was.
So, yeah, I've heard, I've heard all the stories, but before my time.
Thanks, guys. Paul, you had a question?
Yeah, does this, I mean, the placement of the doors, I understand, is not, or the walls and things, is not correct, but I'm just wondering whether you need the swinging door. I'm concerned about being able to navigate that with a, with a wheelchair.
Well, it'll be... I mean, you have to have a door, in my opinion, to go to the bathroom, right?
Right, but you, do you have... That was my question, too. Do you have a door on the front wall there, or on the wall?
No, that's a doorway.
It's like a arch, like an opening.
There's going to be an opening like that, you know, where the exit sign is. It'll just be an opening. So you're going to, so you're going to come into the door. It's Grounds. You're going to walk straight ahead. I drew the doorway to start right away. But Mike Mathie pointed out, don't do that, because you want the wheelchair person to be able to come in at your feet, and then make a turn into an open doorway. You go into the open doorway. Now, there's a second wall in front of you. That has a door straight ahead of you, so that you're not being forced to navigate with the wheelchair left or right. You go through an open doorway, and then you open the door and go into the bathroom.
So there's no way you could put a door in the opening?
I wouldn't want to. I mean, I could, but I don't want two doors. I'd...
Well, that's what I'm saying. Wouldn't it... You'd have a lot more space if you could eliminate that wall.
We would. So we, and frankly, to be honest, I... We've gone back and forth after meeting with Mike. That brought up this whole thing of why even have this wall if all it is is a doorway with a wall to another wall with a door in it. You know, it's kind of overkill in a way. So it may not be... It may turn out that because, and we hadn't thought of ADA stuff until, like I say, he told us, then we thought, well, jeez, that's kind of superfluous.
I'm not trying to def...
Yeah, I get it. Good question.
But I'm saying, it, the space seems to me small, for what I know of.
Right, to have double walls.
ADA bathroom, right?
Yeah.
That, that was my only input.
Well, the space is seven and a half by seven and a half feet in total, which I think if we... You're probably right. We're probably going to end up just building a single wall east-west, and a single wall north-south in that corner, having a door in it, and you're going to open it, because, to your point, it's not a lot of space. It's seven and a half feet. And then to have a wheelchair get in there and be able for a person to turn around and use a grab bar and use the commode, you're going to need some space. And we want to be compliant, you know. I could keep repeating. I'm so glad Mike came, because we certainly want to follow, you know. Our building is handicapped accessible, which is nice. I, I think, I mean, there's a few in New London that are, but ours is really friendly for wheelchairs. And over the years, people have, in wheelchairs, have positively remarked to us that they were happy it was.
Are there other questions from the board? Yeah, Karen.
I'm, I'm just curious how... Okay, so obviously, there's still some changes in the works. How does that work for this process?
So I think that as long as the, the overall dimensions of the building and the space to the exterior of it, so the furthest extent of the bathroom area are decided upon, and the interior layout, the condition would be crafted that the interior layout of the seven-by-seven, seven-five by seven-ten bathroom be configured to meet ADA standards, and that that plan be provided to us, then we get that, that condition fulfilled before we issued the zoning permit.
Yeah, it's a good question. Yeah, Paul?
This is probably AI telling me this, but I just looked up ADA, and it says the minimum turning space is a diameter of five feet, or 60 inches, five feet.
Yep. So, yeah, so right away...
You have enough room. It's just...
Yeah, no, but I'm, I'm, you know, the whole time I'm up here, I'm thinking, yeah, I should have looked that up. And I didn't. So right away, we're saying, it's probably not going to be two walls with a doorway and a door. It's going to be a single east-west wall with a single north-south wall and a door in the center of that east-west wall. You know, like, that's probably what's going to have to happen to make sure that we are compliant.
And the door will be wide enough?
Yeah, we'll put in an extra wide door.
It's supposed to be wide?
Does it say in there if it has to be a swinging door that doesn't have a catch? Like, so you don't have to operate a knob? I mean, I can look. I don't...
I didn't answer that question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think we want to be careful not to give ADA advice.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because it's not our expertise.
I'll look at... I'll, I'll make sure we're compliant. And I know Mike was a wealth of information on it. I keep thinking of safety as things like lights and elect... All the stuff I normally talk to Mike Mathie about, but, you know, when he pointed that out, I, you know, again, I hadn't thought of it. So he obviously has some knowledge, and I can work with him as well.
Yeah. Yeah, Emily?
Would one of those, you know, the barn doors?
Yeah.
Slider at the top?
Yeah.
Would that be an easier way to...
I don't know.
Make that whole thing work?
Good, good, good question.
Those are cool.
They're very cool. They're aesthetically pleasing.
Very aesthetic, yeah.
I just don't know if they're going to...
Okay.
It's a... Yeah, kind of like...
Personally, if you made a...
Yeah, I don't know whether or not they really close...
Yeah.
As completely as you want.
Just throwing that up.
Yeah. Neat suggestion. I mean, aesthetically, I like them a lot, but...
Is the point of the double wall, basically, you're not walking into the main part of your business?
That's what...
And then looking at the bathroom, I assume.
Yeah, like, I guess the whole thought was, is that there are some places that you go to where the bathroom's kind of tucked around a corner...
Right.
For privacy.
Right.
And that was the original intent, but, like I keep repeating, we've now learned things that... And it's not that big a space, right? Like, so you're forced by the circumstance of what the size of the space is to maybe not be as private as we wanted.
Right.
Which is fine. I mean, it's not that big. In my opinion, the privacy thing was nice, but it wasn't a must-have. You still would kind of close the door to use the bathroom, I hope.
That's all hope. Thanks, everybody, for questions. Any, any other questions from the board? What about from the public? Any questions, comments?
Owen, do you have any? My 14-year-old grandson has a question.
Thanks.
He wanted to see how public forums work. So this was your experience. What do you think? Pretty cool. Waste of time.
See, Grandpa, hold the floor. Come on.
I don't know.
Now, you, you shouldn't say that before the vote.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay, so the only condition I think we'd want to put on this would be, like you said, Adam, that we, that it's be ADA-compliant, of course, which is already required, and then that it, that we could furnish a copy of the final layout. Does that work for you, Matt?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. So I think that if someone's so moved, it would be a motion to approve with the condition that the, the plan be provided to the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of the zoning permit that shows an ADA-compliant bathroom layout using these seven-five by seven-ten dimensions.
Okay.
Yes, much better said, Adam. Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect from someone?
Second.
Okay, so Emily made the motion. Paul seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Great.
So just to, just so I'm clear, that means I'll, I'll get the new plan, and I'll bring it to you, Adam, or is it... What form is it that I need to fill out for that?
So...
The State Fire Marshal's building permit form?
So there's a couple of processes. One, we need the, the plan...
Right, to be fixed.
With this layout to go in this file.
Right.
And then the zoning permit. We also need a copy of that plan that goes separate places, that when we sign off on approving that, that's what we send to the State Fire Marshal's office to let them know that you are compliant with all local processes. And then you can go to the Fire Marshal's website for their state building permit.
I have that from Mike.
Yep.
But, but I'm saying, the zoning one is on the zoning website, or that's the one...
It's on the, under the application section on the website, or just stop in tomorrow and see Vicki, and she can give you a paper copy at the front desk.
And I'll just rewrite this.
It looks, it looks just like our building permit application when we stopped issuing building permits for commercial and moved that to the Fire Marshal's.
Yeah.
We had to have some process to show the Fire Marshal that you've done all of your local...
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
All right.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for letting me use a microphone.
Did it very well. Thanks, Matt. Take care. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you.
What do you think?
Me, too.
We all have four of them.
That's right.
Okay. Six o'clock, all right.
Yeah, that might be more interesting, yeah.
Fireworks. Okay, do you want to talk about...
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'll probably notice that on the agenda, I crossed out the topic of the site plan review parking regulations that we had kicked to tonight. And that is because there's once again a bill before the legislature to amend it and change what the potential parking requirements could be. So I don't think it's in the best interest of our efforts to go through the whole process to come into compliance with last year's bill, when in two months, there could be an entirely different bill. So we're not very far out of compliance with last year's. It's that if we got a multifamily of the 10 units or more, we can't require more than one and a half spaces per unit. So if we get an application for 10 units or more between now and May, which seems very unlikely, we would have to grant a waiver that acknowledged that that's what the RSA has, which we have the power to do. So I don't think that that's the best thing to waste our time on when we may have different parameters come June. So what I did want to make sure you guys were aware of, and I'm sorry that it printed excessively large. The thing that I printed before this was a spreadsheet, then, so it kept, saved the functions, and I didn't want to waste the paper to do it all over again. So this is, the Municipal Association does legislative updates throughout the legislative season, and the one from two weeks ago had the summaries for all of the current bills that have to do with housing. And so these are the ones that, if they make it through both chambers and go across the governor's desk, that we will have to deal with in some fashion. There's certainly a lot of debate as to the merits of each one of these bills. I don't think we necessarily have to, you know, get involved at, at that level at this point. As individuals, you can certainly reach out to your reps if you have particular thoughts on any of them, and I would encourage you to do so. But this is a good synopsis to sort of keep track of everything that's going on. And then in today's Valley News, I don't know if any of you are regular readers or not. You may have already seen this, but there was an updated article on where some of the, the different things stand, and some of the concerns being brought up by different municipalities and the Municipal Association. So I wanted to make sure you all had a copy of that as well. The Valley News has had several articles throughout the legislative season about it, mostly duplicates from the Concord Monitor, too. So if you have a Monitor subscription and you've read those, they're likely the same articles. But if there's anything from the Valley News that you'd like to read from past editions and you don't have a subscription, let me know, and we can, I can print that through my subscription for you. But this is the most up-to-date. So that's my update there. And if nobody has any questions on those two things, I'll jump to the next thing to update you on.
Adam, I just...
Yep.
We've read the paragraph, and it seems inconsistent. The fifth paragraph. The bill would restrict...
Sorry. The bill would restrict municipalities from acquiring, requiring lots in single-family residential zones to be larger than one acre if served by town water. Under the proposal, municipalities couldn't make building lots on town water and sewer to be larger than half-acre.
So...
Half-acre?
So it's one acre if they only have water, and half-acre if they have both water and sewer.
Okay, sorry.
The water part obviously complicates things. The bill, and I, I think it actually goes into this in the Legislative Bulletin, but the bill provides a relief valve if you do not have water capacity, but there are standards for what evidence you have to provide. So if that were to pass, and we were tasked with coming into compliance, we'd have to figure out whether the current evidence and information that the water precinct has meets the, the test of what this bill has said doesn't allow you to comply with that. So that's something that we'll have to wade through if, if it passes.
Their problem?
Well, both, because it would be their problem to prove that, I think the way it's written is like empirical evidence, or something along those lines. It'd be their problem to prove that that is the case, and then it would be our problem to weigh whether their evidence meets that threshold. And then if it doesn't meet that threshold, we would have to implement the one-acre maximum on the, the lots that have water but no sewer, which is, we have a good portion of town that actually has water but no sewer. Very little that has sewer but no water. But like all of Burpee Hill and that area has water and no sewer, so... Yep. And there's, you know, there's some more wide sweeping bills like that, and then there are the, the ones that we've expected, because it's the third year that they've been proposed, like the detached ADUs. So there's a wide variety of things on this year's docket. So I would expect some of them will pass. I wouldn't expect, obviously, that all of them pass, but stay tuned.
Seems like they've gotten further, though, this year, because they made it past the...
The... It does seem like...
The midterm, whatever that is.
Crossover.
Yeah, the crossover.
It does seem like there's a lot more momentum, but there's also just a lot more of the bills on the whole than in previous years.
So maybe...
It is, yeah. It'll be interesting to see where it goes. And the, the support on the different bills, there doesn't seem to be a rhyme or reason of, as far as party goes, there, it's very interesting. But stay tuned.
Yep, thank you.
The next thing to update you guys on, the meeting on May 6th, which I know I mentioned at the last meeting. I hadn't told you what the application was going to be, and I don't want to get into any actual conversation of the application, because it's actually an application before us now. So we have to be very careful not to have conversation about the merits of it. But just to let you know what it is, we will be holding a joint meeting with the zoning board to review the site plan approval for Colby Sawyer's lights on the athletic fields, along with a variance from the zoning board of adjustment. One component left out of the presentation to us from the lighting company when we were working on redrafting that was that the light poles have to be 80 feet tall to be dark sky compliant. So in order to reduce the light trespass of the poles, you have to obviously have the lights cast straight down. In order for the cone of light to stretch wide enough to make it across the width of the field, because obviously, you can't plop a light pole in the middle of the, the playing surface, you have to go higher. So when I saw the plan three weeks ago and met with Laura Sykes, I initially thought it was a typo, because the consultant had never brought that up when they knew what the height regulation was. And it turns out, it's not a typo, and that, that's standard for basically all dark sky compliant college athletic fields. So the zoning board will need to grant them a variance from the height regulation, which is 35 feet, in order to install these four poles. So we're trying to do this through a joint meeting. I think at least some of you were on this board, or you were zoning board members when we did this last, also for Colby Sawyer when the World Clinic needed to occupy space that the college had formerly had, I think, for housing, if I remember right. And we held a joint session, and so this is allowed by RSA for the ZBA and the planning board to have a joint meeting. They essentially work as two independent meetings within one. It's technically a planning board meeting. Tim presides over the meeting, opens it, and then turns it over to Michael Todd. The zoning board will go through their criteria, presumably grant the, the variance in order for you to move on. If they don't, then the meeting is done at that point. If they get their variance, then that portion is over, and then you guys move into reviewing the site plan, which in this case is the four lights around the field, and then the lights along the access road. The lights along the access road, because they're illuminating a much smaller area, are only 20, don't quote me, but I think it's 24, maybe 25 feet. They're basically a standard light pole. So it's really just those four. And so then you would go through the site plan review, just as you normally would, and then we'd do it all in one. The college is under a little bit of a time crunch, so we offered them this as a way to try and move things forward a little bit more expeditiously. The zoning board will still, that's their regular meeting night, so they still have another application after this. So we will be starting at 6:00, so that hopefully we can, you know, thinking worst-case scenario, we can be done, Colby Sawyer, by 8:00, so that we can get on to the... And then you guys are free to leave. You don't have to stay for the rest of it, but so that we can move on for the special exception that they still have on their docket after that. So then we would meet again the next week, and because we've already given that meeting date to folks, to a couple of applicants, I think we should stick to it. But because you'd already have met twice that month, I would propose not meeting the Tuesday, the 27th, the day after Memorial Day, which would be your normal meeting, but you, you would have already met twice that month.
Adam, for perspective, what's the tallest structure in the town right now?
I, I don't know 100% what that is, Joe.
Okay.
There's one that I believe that it is, but I don't want to...
Huh?
I, yeah. I don't, well, technically, I think it's the M-127 transmission lines from Eversource, which I think are 72 feet. But I think it's either the Colgate Hall or the Baptist Church steeple. I'm not sure the tallest point on that, but...
Thanks, Joe. Are there, again, to Adam's point about not getting into this now, because this is before us, but any questions more on the, the...
Procedures?
Procedure, yeah, procedure, or any of that from folks? Okay. Sorry, I was looking at my calendar.
I'm a...
Sure.
There's a number of people that aren't here, and I had never heard that before, but I, I've been out some, so I think we've got to make sure everyone knows this.
Yep, will do. We'll send out a...
Yeah, good point, Paul.
And we've, I think all the media materials went on the website today, maybe. So now that they're up, we can send a link. So it should be in the paper tomorrow.
And tomorrow night?
Sure. So tomorrow night, well, first, I guess I should bring you guys all up to speed, in case you are not, although I imagine most are. That's good. There has been a major structural issue identified at Public Works, and the Public Works offices and garages have been moved out of and will be demolished sometime in the coming weeks. It's a, a pretty serious structural issue, obviously, and there's no fix for it that doesn't outweigh the cost of the actual structure as it exists today. And so the selectmen decided last week that that needed to be addressed sooner rather than later. Obviously, we don't have money in this year's budget... Obviously, we don't have money in this year's budget to build a new Public Works garage and offices, so we will be utilizing temporary office space. If you've been by, you've probably seen the little shipping container buildings. One is for the, the crews to have lunch in and have a bathroom. The other has the administrative assistance space, all of their files and a bathroom. And then Sam is, as probably you remember, there used to be a second person in my office that hasn't been shared for the last few years, once we combined the, the position into just one me, so the other workspace became Sam's sort of real landing workspace, and then he has, he'll have a little space with Nancy in the shipping container, but they're small. It's not really set up for two people to, to be in, so he'll kind of go back and forth. And then over the next year, we will work on designs for how to reconstruct an office and the lost five bays that are lost. Obviously, we don't know what that's going to look like, but that means that the selectmen are going to have to shift priorities a little bit, and they are trying to wade through that to figure out what the process is going forward with regards to that and the police station. So tomorrow night, they have convened a meeting of the select board, the budget committee, and the building and police advisory committee. I should know what time it is, at 6 o'clock? Okay. In this room, where they're going to wade through some of those questions, obviously, town meeting is still open and that will happen again on May 14th, and so they need to figure out how to proceed. So that will be discussed tomorrow night. Lots going on.
Yep, I figured most everybody was aware, but just thought it was good just to.
Good to get it on the record.
Yep. Any questions about that from folks? Okay, the last thing on our agenda is always, anything that's not on our agenda, so you, sir, from the public, anything you'd like to speak about?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. No other business, right? I don't think we have anything, okay. So Adam went over May 6th. Is there anything else from anybody on the board? Okay, seeing none, I just need a motion to adjourn.
So.